Nine to.
Oh, good, it's only an hour.
Well, there we go.
Somebody's coming in.
Larry said to me.
Oh, probably the dog.
Comes in with Danny.
He is an excellent.
Yeah.
It's crazy.
Howard?
Yeah.
Did you hear from Jeff Burns today? Yeah.
All right, you've called us. Meeting's ordered. Roll call.
Mr. McCaslin.
Yes.
Mr. Christian.
Yes.
Mr. Hager.
Here.
Ms. Maddox.
Here.
Mr. Russell.
Here.
And approve the minutes of February 7th, 2023 regular meeting.
Did we not have a meeting last month?
Okay.
And you probably sent the minutes with that.
Yes.
Yeah, which I didn't print.
Yeah, I forgot to. Do you want copies?
Yeah, I didn't stick them in my folder, so if I could get a copy, I'll.
Just bring ones in. You're lucky.
We went through, got three issues like that.
Safe sport. Yeah.
I were just.
Not good enough. Well, if you can't, then you gotta do something else. Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Sorry about that, folks. Just wanted to make sure that we confirmed, we set back. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 7th meeting.
Hold on a second.
Mr. Christian. Mr. Hager.
Yes.
Ms. Maddox.
Yes.
Mr. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. McCaslin.
Now, get to it. You roll call with that.
There we go.
Oh, yeah. Allison Curry reviewed the subdivision map for lot here on subdivision within Plant Station at 22 North 48.
All right, we've got a copy of the map here, pretty much as you described last, at the last meeting, which we had, you know, thought there was no issues with it, and I think it's fairly decent there. It's not as steep as your other lot. It's got good access. It's got good sight view along the road there. You know, I don't know if we'll get onto that lot.
You already have a copy of that, don't you?
I sent it this, yeah. Yeah, this is. This is the email I got from Carl.
Can I have a copy of that, please?
Hang on a second. I'll cut you in one. Thank you. You have one?
No.
Was there any, you know, went to the county plan?
Went to the county and died.
Planning did not have any issues, or did they not have any?
The only issue they had was with the driveway, and we overrode it because it's, I mean, the driveway was good. He has to do that after, with them. It has nothing to do with our approval.
Right.
Everything else that they tried to over, we overrode them because they're, it's none of their deal.
Well, I mean, this is a separate subdivision than the previous lot anyway, so it's two separate issues.
Yeah, yeah.
And this one does not seem to have any of the state issues.
No.
Previous lot, which. And I know what you mean, you know, but I don't, I don't recall. A lot of you about your.
Hey, someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the subdivision of tax map parcel 244 dot dash one dash 24 point 332.
Hold on a second. Pete?
Yes.
You want to get a little more detailed on that? All you've got really is tax map parcel number.
Yeah, at 222 Norrisville Road. No, that's not the address. No? Okay, that's what it says on that.
It's my address.
Right, well, this is the, your lot is being subdivided.
Right, right. 1746.
Right, so that has no address because this is the lot that's being subdivided.
Right.
So currently, the, the address of this lot is 222, because this whole lot is 222.
Until you get the D.
Until you get it.
Right.
The subdivision will then create a new lot.
Correct.
And then you can get a separate address.
All right.
So that is the lot that's being subdivided.
Right.
Roll call?
Yep.
Mr. Christian.
Yes.
Mr. Hager.
Yes.
Ms. Maddox.
Yes.
Mr. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. McCaslin.
Yes.
Do you want the other one back?
Yeah, if, if he's going to stamp them, stamp them all, and then. Will those two stay?
Yes.
What's your procedure for time on adding them down to the county clerk's office? We haven't, I don't think we have, uh.
We don't present it to the county clerk.
Oh, no, no, I, I haven't presented, but do you have a time? I'd love to do that. I'll have to run down there tomorrow. No. I know some places.
It's forever until you change it.
You're keeping that one?
Yes, I need one for my files.
So, I'm complete. You are, sir. Okay, appreciate the time. Appreciate the board's time. Thank you.
Have a good one.
Yeah. Now, move on to Jeffrey Ashling's site plan review for special use permit for storage units at tax map parcel number 219 dot dash two dot, or dash 43 dot three located between 1746 and 1814 O22B. Top of the L, right?
Yes.
So, there's no lot or street address for that because they won't give them one until they actually.
This, this lot?
Yes, until they actually have it on, on the map.
Right up the top, next to the swamp land.
So, you know, past the auction house, past the big field.
Where they'd be filling in there.
Right across from Sears or Sears Drive or something like that.
Yeah.
So, question I have is that it does show as being partially wetlands in that area.
Okay.
Has there been a delineation done at, at any time, do you know of?
Not that I know of.
Saying that you're not in the wetlands, or whoever filled it in, I mean, it's been filled longer than you owned it.
Yeah, prior to me purchasing it, it was filled in.
Right.
They just kind of pushed whatever they had piled up.
Right, so basically, in doing a little bit of research and printing some maps out, about half that lot is shown being, you know, in the wetland area.
Okay.
Now, you can get DEC to come out and delineate that, you know, because you'll need to get a DEC permit, you know, I'm not sure how, how it works with Howard and the building permits and such, but, you know, as part of the, of tonight's thing, we're doing an environmental review, and we can't honestly say it's not in the wetland if we see it on the wetland map.
Right.
And so that could complicate things.
Okay.
Uh, hopefully, they didn't fill in a wetland and leave you holding the bag.
Right.
You know, anything that's done within a wetland or the check zone, which is another buffer area around a wet, you know, wetland, is supposed to have DEC review in order to
Okay.
fill or build, and then you put a driveway through a wetland, then they could take it out.
Right.
Get that through Bertrand?
So.
I got it through, uh, Regan Creek.
So they, you know, they may have gotten it looked at, but
Yeah.
without us knowing if it's a wetland or not, I'm not sure if we should, how far we should go with the, with the site plan review or special use permit.
Okay.
If we don't know, you know, and you don't know, you know, you could go further and then find out that DEC says, you know, this is all wetland and you can't do anything here.
Right.
And I know it's a hardship already, you know, and you've already went to the zoning board of appeals.
Yes.
And they, have they asked any of these questions, or they weren't really thinking about that?
No, they didn't address any of those issues whatsoever.
The environmental issues, but, and that's kind of why we have to do this environmental assessment form, is that we have to look at all these issues to see, is there a problem environmentally?
Right.
I know Chris said that all that land next to the auction house is wetland.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's a, actually, the auction house, all that land is wet, but it's not wet. So that's all the auction house land that goes down there.
Yeah.
That used to own, you know, belonged to the subdivision folks.
Yeah.
But it's only that back half of the lot that you're looking at showing on a map. Doesn't mean that it is.
Right.
DEC just puts maps out there.
Yeah.
It just says, we think this is wet.
Something to make you look at.
But you really should double check that before you start doing anything.
Okay.
So I'm not sure how we should proceed.
How would you get ahold of them?
Well, you call the DC office in Rainbrook and say, I've got a piece of, you know, I've got a piece of land, and, you know, it shows me on a wetland map. Now, you can make the argument that it's not, you know. If you go, especially, they're going to want to look at the native plants and the soils and all that kind of stuff back behind where that fill is. Because the fill doesn't go all the way back to.
Fill is all the way back to the property.
It does?
Concrete, asphalt, all the way to the back.
Yeah, so could be a complicating factor, you know.
But it's, however, it's not wet back there, so, I mean, if I could go through that, then.
Right, so if, if behind all that fill, it's not wet, then they may say, okay, yeah, you're not in the wetlands, you know, which you, you know, but I think you're better off getting that checked out first.
Right.
Which is kind of a.
I know they've been kind of, they've been filling in down on Burger Street, there's an old mixing plant.
Yeah.
Cattails and water and everything, but it's not wetland.
Right.
So, generally speaking, they'll come out and do a delineation at no charge, you know, if you say, hey, can you come and delineate the property and tell me where the wetlands are or not?
Right.
It may not be tomorrow, you know, but you can also.
Fairly timely.
It's fairly timely. I've had people come out, you know, the agency I work for, you know, occasionally I have to call the DC for things like this, and it's fairly quick. You know, they might be this week, it might be a week or two from now, just to come out and take a look at the property. I mean, they're first you got to look at the map, you know, if you go on to the, there's two different websites you can go on to, and it will tell you what wetland number it is, and you can give them a coordinate, or you can give them an address, and they can look at it as well. It's, probably your best bet is to have, have it looked at first.
Okay.
Before we proceed with a, you know, with an approval of something that we don't even know if you can do something.
Right.
I know Chris had somebody do something, so you might be able to get ahold of it, just ask him. Doctor could save you some steps.
Okay. Chris, who was that?
At the auction house, he owns the auction house.
Okay, yeah, perfect.
So, I don't know, that's, that's my opinion.
Right.
It'd save you some time and hassle if it does turn out to be, you know, something. Granted, you didn't fill it in, you know, so.
So you won't have to take it out.
Well, I hope that's the case. But that's, that's what I would recommend. I think you probably should withdraw your application for tonight, get that checked out, and then come back to us in the future, but, you know, once we know for sure that you're okay with that.
All right.
Sorry about that. Kind of what our job is to do is make sure that, you know, we head problems off before that happens.
Right.
Otherwise, you know.
Say what it is.
It's worth consideration.
All right.
Sorry about that.
No problem. Appreciate your time.
Yeah.
And move on to Michael and Alice Cobles Street.
Is there anybody here for them?
No.
Do you remember the phone call?
What promise is that?
Jeff Burns is representing them from RMS. Jeff has been known to us on meetings in the past, so.
And they were just out flagging it today.
Oh.
I drove by around 2 o'clock, and they're out there putting the.
Two weeks ago, um, I had a discussion with him on the phone and gave him a hard time about it, but he promised he'd be here.
However, that didn't work. Not looking good. So you're going to move down the list?
Good luck. You don't have anybody here to answer your questions.
This is the, the.
The old loss.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, that's what I wanted to hear.
So, this is the.
Too young to remember. It was an order right there, it was the top of the hill.
Yeah, just to, just to name it.
The signs are right.
Yes.
They were going to move, these houses were built on the lot.
I just laugh, it's more than that.
As far, so they were going to move that most people's property lines back in order to give them a piece of their backyards.
Yeah.
Then they were going to break a lot out at the top.
Yeah.
They were going to leave a gap in the mid, they were going to, no, a lot in the middle, but then they were going to have two access points for the rest of the remaining lands. So I guess, but the problem is, in my book, is that this access point where the existing road is now.
Right, so you can.
But this lot is, when that ditch comes along, is a huge steep bank right there.
How can you put a road in there?
You know? And I don't know, you know, if the, the question I had is, coming down the hill, there's a paved swale that pretty much is on the bottom lot of that property proposed subdivision. Is there a right of way for that? I mean, the county, it used to be a county road, so I wonder if the county had a, a right of way for that paved swale on the side of the road.
There's a road.
Yeah, but the old road is right here in the middle.
Okay.
See how it kind of stuck?
Yeah, yeah, I see, yeah.
This is super steep bank.
I realize that.
And this is where that ditch starts going off.
There's concrete.
Yeah, that's what I mean, it's a paved swale. There may be a, you know, you can't really see it very well there, but that's what it is.
Yeah.
And the upper lot is a kind of steep bank along the road just before the top of the hill.
So how can you get in there?
Yeah, that's, that's my concern. And it's like, if you drive up the hill from Mesa Street.
Yes, right.
It's in right, yeah, there's a little bit of flat ground.
Right there.
Back with the back of the yard, but they're giving it there.
Yeah.
So they're going to move the property along that way, and this lot here, there may be enough. The problem is too, these, these maps are supposed to just show us the lots, the setbacks, and everything. And this map is too big, but it's too big of a.
Wasn't that come engineered one though?
No, I mean, this is the only, this, well, I got this from Howard at the office.
Yeah.
But, uh, but this is not enough for us to see, like, they're supposed to show setbacks on these survey maps. They're supposed to show, you know, that it's going to fit everything on that, each of those building lots, and right now, you can't even see. It's, they're big enough lots. They're one acre and 2.6 acres, but they should show us on a subdivision like this, they should show where the driveways are going to be, and, you know, the setbacks around the outsides. It's, I just don't know if this is a major sub, probably not a major, because it probably hasn't changed much in 50 years.
Yeah, I wouldn't think so.
Has it, has it, any of those lots new, or they've been there forever? All those other houses that, like, up near.
One of them.
I don't know, like, Rixson's area, those have been there for a long time.
50s or 60s or something like that.
Yeah. Couple of them were probably 70s.
Yeah.
But they've been there a while. The ones that are close.
It may still be a minor subdivision, but it's just difficult, so. Well, there's no one here, so we really can't consider it.
Yeah, I guess it didn't show. So I gave it a really hard time about it, so now I guess I give it a really hard time again.
You put it back on for next walk?
He's got to reply. I don't know, just automatically.
Also, it says scale should be no more than 100 feet to the inch, and this is a 1 inch to 200 feet. So it's, even, even this map is totally too small, scale wise. It should show all the public's roads, driveways, things like that. Location of well, septic systems, water.
All right, so we're going to move on then to move business. Review application forms for change to four minutes.
Which one are we looking at first?
I would say we do more subdivisions than we do site plans, so let's look at.
Subdivision, subdivision with improvements, I assume, is a, like, roads or something like that. What's realty? What does that mean?
Where are you?
On the project type on subdivision application.
Oh, I see, yeah.
It says subdivision with improvements, realty, or subdivision without improvements.
Sorry, I remember that.
I'm not quite sure.
Well, I would say with improvements is going to be a building.
Uh, well, subdivision with improvements would be a major with roads and, and infrastructure, whereas a subdivision without improvements, I think would be a minor, essentially saying, you're breaking out a lot on a major road.
Okay.
I mean, you've got to know what we're talking about.
So that's where, that's where, so instead of having two applications, one for a minor subdivision, one for a major subdivision, we would just use this one, and.
Well, we only have one now.
Yeah.
I mean, we just call it a minor.
Well, they have to write on it what, what they're doing.
This makes it, well, this also doesn't, the only problem with this is that we don't have these definitions in our existing zoning law. We have minor subdivision and major subdivision, so I think that's all we should probably put on there as project types, minor subdivision or major subdivision, if we're going to.
Well, Howard should have most of the stuff down anyway now, what he needs, right?
It's getting there, but not.
No, it's not something happens overnight, is it, Howard?
So, date of submission, tax map.
So we'll just say ma- minor subdivision, major subdivision.
I think so. Got a date, parcel ID, zoning district, they should know that, I guess, you know, if they, they may have to look it up, or Howard looks it up, puts it in there, project name, project address, description, property owner, applicant.
One thing that happens a lot is we don't get the address for where the actual
Property.
Property is.
It does say project address up there. So there's project address, and then there's the property owner address on this form, which, so there is a spot for the project. And also a spot for the owner if they don't live at that spot. Lots of contact information. Lots. Back, site description, utilities.
Do we need to know the current use of the property?
Yeah, I mean, when we're doing subdivisions and, and, I don't know, probably wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, it's a commercial.
Or is it woods, or is it already?
Leveled out, ready for proper.
Site description, character of surrounding area. I guess if you're subdividing, and, you know, you could say it's in a neighborhood area, or it's, I don't know, why not? More information is better. If it has utilities, what district sits in, I mean, we've never actually asked or considered.
So we can eliminate sewer.
Yeah.
Depends on where they're going. Are they talking about the share, or doing one through San Road down to the bridge?
You're not going to see that.
I mean, I don't know whether we need to know that it's in a fire district or an ambulance or lighting district. That, does that really affect?
No.
No, because you have to have egress for emergency vehicles anyway.
So.
It has to be 12 foot wide.
And so, like, is it in a water district? That would go back to the utilities, like, if it has public water, then it's in a water district. Is there only one in?
Yeah.
Satter Falls, or?
Wood, Wood Mills.
Okay. But that doesn't really affect us either. It doesn't really.
San Road and.
Unless there was, unless the water districts have a limitation on how many people they can serve, I mean.
Well, the one around AC Lane does.
So, but we've never considered that before, so I don't know whether we need to
Well.
add a lot more stuff on.
Private sewer, there are places, um.
What they have.
Kent Falls Road, there's a trailer park there, but some of them are not trailers. There's actually a couple of houses there, and they have their own sewer system. It's a group system under the sack, so they, what their well.
Is it regulated by the county health department?
I would assume it would have to be. I know the well is.
Because I mean, because normally, the, I think the county health department regulates, like, group septic, you know, systems for like a large.
Yeah, no, why are they do that?
You get a place that's got, uh, RV park. Well, you get a place that's got, uh, RV park, it's gotta have regulated septic. So I guess we would leave that.
I think asking what kind of utilities they have is about all we need, I don't know that we need to know what service districts that, that whole section could get stretched.
I mean, that really doesn't affect us. That's for a health.
I mean, in, in our subdivision considerations, I don't think we've ever thought about it.
No.
Lighting district doesn't make a difference.
So property size, acres of disturbance, that's good to know. Uh, only because, you know, there's certain, anything over an acre is gonna require more regulatory.
And anything over 10 acres is going to require, um, they could into, um, shoot, my brain's not working.
Well, now, it's one acre requires erosion and sediment control, five acres requires a whole stormwater prevention.
That's what I was trying to get out, yeah, it used to be 10, it's now 5?
Yeah.
Okay.
Pretty sure it's 5, they've just, they've been tightening up those regulations.
Okay, um, property size, we're saying acres, but if it's a minor subdivision, we need to know the actual square footage.
Well, so, we could put.
I guess we can calculate that.
Yeah, somebody might put in, we're gonna have the tax map parcel.
I'll just sort of slash with square footage, that's that.
Yeah. Description of, I mean, a subdivision application, that, you know, do we need a description of proposed structures and improvements? Most people aren't subdividing, you know, you could subdivide and not build a house, you know, you don't have to build something.
On a current septic application.
Right, that's a, that's a building permit system. So I don't know whether or not.
I thought he said he was doing a house for his daughter.
You could add, you could probably put in, you know, future plan for property, but that's even a little overreaching, I would think, you know, it's like, I wanna subdivide my property and create a new lot, and maybe I'll sell it, and maybe I won't.
The only time, the only thing we really look at then is, would be for the setbacks.
Mm-hmm, right, okay.
And right of way, all the rest of it's up to him.
Yeah.
So.
So if it was proposed as a commercial building versus a residential, then it would have different setbacks, different lot sizes, alright, we keep that. Those are lots and uses, that's the next line, anyway. Phase, commencement, completion. Yeah, it's got some good questions.
Um, commencement and completion, that really doesn't affect us?
Well...
Commencement, maybe.
On a major subdivision, when they're putting in, you know, 20 lots and a road and all that kinda stuff, it might, but then that's usually, once we approve it, we never comes back to us for that kind of.
No.
That's what I'm saying, and completion doesn't, that's more Howard's venue.
And that's more of a, yeah, that's more of a construction.
Right.
So maybe that's not.
And we don't put a time limit on how long the subdivision's put for. Once it's subdivided, it's subdivided.
So like, in increases in residence use and all that, I guess that's a little bit of site plan review, which does have to happen with a subdivision, you wanna know what's, how, how big of a deal is this gonna be? Is it gonna affect the neighborhood, the town, the region, you know, is there, you're putting in a subdivision with 100 lots, you're gonna create a lot more.
Noise.
Stuff, so that would be good to know. Whether it uses, needs a variance, that's probably good to know. But they really would be coming, they'd have to get the variance first, wouldn't they?
Mm-hmm.
So, does it require an area or use variance?
Well, a lot of times they come to us first, and then you send them to.
Right. But if they're filling this out on the form, and they're saying, yes, it needs a variance, then we wouldn't even see it.
They, they might not even know they need a variance.
Is that the form they're already using?
No. Right, this form here is just a, some, we were sort of looking at town of Plattsburg's form.
No, it's a borough permit.
That's where they gotta handle. It's, you know, we're trying to adopt or, you know, adapt.
Yeah.
Use something that's a little bit more modern. This form is a PDF that can be used as a fillable form, so that somebody can fill this in online. You know, if it was on the website, and you could have a PDF, a fillable PDF, that somebody could just type their answers in, and then submit it to Howard, and never have to walk through the door.
Right. Maybe in the year 2035.
Uh, so then, they obviously have a lot more things on their checklist, application, the seeker form, you know, I don't know, they must have, they must need more plans for a major and a minor, maybe that's why there's two different types of plans required, required, you know, not quite sure. Notarized affidavit, I guess that's, what do they require an affidavit for?
Somebody else is sitting here for you.
Right, maybe.
That's the only time, we, we have that on our application form now, basically, if the applicant cannot.
Right.
Be present, then we need a notarized letter stating.
Like tonight, it should have been.
That's just like it said for tonight.
Yeah, it should have been, uh...
But when it's an engineer, that's, you know, when it's an engineering surveying firm that's showing up, we pretty much know.
Is a professional or?
It's, right. Yeah. We've never required it for that.
So, well, there's, it would be a cleaner, more modern form. That would certainly, once we put the town of Scotter Falls stamp emblem on the top.
Right.
You know.
So the only thing we're really changing is, instead of saying subdivision with improvements, we're going to call it a major subdivision.
Right.
And subdivision without improvements, we're gonna call a minor subdivision.
Yeah, and right now, that's the only applications for subdivision that we have.
Right. So, on the backside, we're going to eliminate service districts, we don't need that.
Yep.
Um, property size is gonna be acres slash square footage.
Yeah. Maybe scratch the commencement.
Commencement and completion. And then, the very last, what do you want? I mean, we do need to say what we want in the application, and how many forms we need.
So I don't know what's in our checklist now.
Um, basically, it's the application form, a copy of the deed, um, a hand drawn map indicating north and south, east and west.
Well, that's for a minor.
That's for a minor, yes. Um, and, um...
Well, I'd do you like a sketch plan.
It says a tax map, site plan, and evidence of ownership.
Right.
So, in a major subdivision, of course, we're requiring that we have engineered maps.
So that's maybe where, you know, on a major, that you don't want the five sets of 24 by 36 plans, you know.
Right.
And on a minor, it might be a set of the, you know, more of a...
But I think we need to indicate what you want for a major, and what you want for minor, cause somebody might come in, Howard might not be here to talk to, one of the girls gives them the application, they go home with that, and then they're like, I gotta have, you know, 17 map.
It's in the zoning ordinance, you know, so there's a...
But who's reading it? Really?
Well, that's where it needs to have a separate handout, or maybe attached to the
Maybe we can just have an application, or attach to the application a list of what you want included in that application, eliminating this bottom line.
And then, like, requirements for, minor requirements for a major, and then, you know, then we have to define or let people know what a major is, based on the, on the look back period, too.
Right.
Like, has your parcel been subdivided more five, more than four times since 1972?
Is that gonna change?
I hope so, but it's stupid.
I've been asking for over 20 years. Who had, who makes that decision? Town board.
And how do we bug them?
Committee.
They're working on it now.
They need, we're working on it now. Now, it'll be a long time. I know.
Well, yeah, so I think.
We're trying to get them to change it.
Slower thing ever is to do.
So maybe, this is the application, and there probably should be a little more of a handout that talks about what, you know, what kind of subdivision am I doing?
Okay.
And, you know, that people could say, is your sub, you know, is it this, or is it that? And people might even be able to work down a little decision tree and say, oh, okay, I have a major subdivision, and I've gotta fill it out as a major.
Okay, so what I need to know, your requirements for a minor subdivision, what do you want to see? You obviously wanna see the application form.
The checklist of where the applications go.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Or should there be two separate subdivision applications, one for a minor?
I would think, yeah, because you're, I mean, why would you give them both, and they get confused?
That they just have to know ahead of time what they're actually, cause if somebody says, oh, I'm just doing a lot, they assume that it's a minor subdivision.
Right.
It should be right on that sheet that you just handed Sandy. My, my suggestion is to stay right on there, minor subdivision up to major subdivision over.
The problem is going to be that 1973. That 1972 thing, yeah. Because they don't know, they purchased that property 20 years ago, but 30 years ago, somebody sold four other parcels off that property. They don't know that, it doesn't state that in their deed, so they don't know that. That's where, it's our job to look at that. But it's really the kind of thing where they have to go in and talk to Howard and...
Well, somebody that's doing a subdivision should be talking to.
Should be talking to Howard to start off with. But part of the problem with that is, is it's a part-time position, and you can't be here all the time when people can be here. That's the difficult part of that. And when they ask the girls in the office, they have no idea.
Well, I mean, I think this is...
They'll probably call me.
Having a new application is a good idea, but there's so much more that needs to be clarified.
But, so, not everybody's gonna hire an attorney just to subdivide.
Right, we wanna make, we don't wanna make it complicated, you know, we don't wanna make it common sense and easy to understand, so that people can, you know, not be mad at their local government.
Good luck with that.
Okay, so.
We don't have to be bad.
Right now, we're asking for three copies of the tax map. So, do you wanna ask, continue to ask for three copies, or do you wanna ask for six copies, or seven copies?
So that.
Cause there's actually five board members, the attorney, and myself.
I mean...
But I can make copies, so it's, but when I'm getting the bigger maps, I can't do those.
For a subdivision, is there a cost to apply?
No.
So, so essentially, if they, you know, if, if we had a fee, then, then we could cover the costs of copying, printing.
Which we've discussed that.
We need a fee to do this?
Well, for somebody to apply to subdivide.
You have to remember, you have to remember though, Larry, when somebody's, Board of Appeals charges $75, correct? $75 for an application. They have to, for that application, they have to pay the secretary to be there, they have to pay to put that ad in the paper, they have to pay for the attorney to be there for the meeting. So, just the attorney alone is gonna cost you a whole lot more than what that application fees. What the discussion is, is having an application fee that is minimal to help cover some of the cost, but isn't going to be so absorbent that somebody applying, I mean, talking $25 to come in, get a legal subdivision of your property, is not asking too much.
I think it is.
I mean, every one of us, every one of us is getting a mail, a $2.22 envelope, I mean, all those things cost money.
Everything costs money.
And I don't like paying fees, but if you're getting something.
But, you know, now that...
It's not up to us, it's up to the town.
Remember that when it comes time to pay taxes.
That's where I have to pay taxes paid for.
You're, you're, no, your taxes pay for your highway, your taxes pay for this building and the people who work in it, your taxes pay for your water districts, and your lighting districts, and ambulance service, and fire district, and all of those things. This is something that most people aren't going to be doing.
Well, I mean, especially, I just...
Who pays for it now? I'm sorry, but you should not have to pay to the vacant land or to build a building.
And we, how's the town doing financially? Just saying.
Well, I think that this whole discussion is...
We're probably the only town in the county that is not charging for this. Go to any of the other towns, they charge.
And I would say.
Town of Plattsburg probably cost you an arm and a leg.
I don't know, it's even in our job description to set the fees, whether that's us, or whether that's the town.
No, it's the town board.
My worst hope they never do.
Alright, well.
So.
I think the same checklist, you know, if it's a good checklist, we probably ought to keep that.
Alright, so three copies of each. The only thing is, is when they get into those bigger maps, I can't make copies of them, like Curry's.
Right.
I, it's too big, I can't.
Well, then we need more copies.
Go in there, you should get, it's on them to make that.
If somebody's bringing in the 24 by 36s, then maybe we do need five sets, so that everybody has one.
Six sets, because we need one for the attorney as well, and one to file.
Well, most of us don't keep them either.
No, I don't.
I look at the meeting, even if we have less numbers for the big ones.
They gotta have all.
The big ones, typically, we request three of the big maps like Curry brought in, so that the property owner has one to keep on file, they have one to file with the county, and then we have one to file here.
Cause, you know, putting giant maps in an envelope is a waste of space, too.
Right.
I think 11 by 17 is fine, like, this size right here.
Yeah, and that I can make copies of.
Pretty good.
Right, right.
So if they wanna bring the bigger ones in, just bring five copies.
We can share them.
Yeah.
If they're bringing in the bigger maps, three copies.
Right.
We do. Engineered maps, three copies.
And then.
Who are those, who are those gonna go to?
Who are those going to go to? That's a tough one. Um, I don't know where he did it, but Bill used to sometimes make copies, smaller copies that I could fold and put into the, um...
Stable.
Corners that the guys go.
You can make big ones like that.
Well, if they have an engineer, the engineer can do it, they have the machines to do it. But, um, all we would need is one that size, and then we can make copies here in the 11 by 17. But, that's, that's...
I'm just wondering, three copies, who would those get distributed to?
Well, chairman, Pete, and then the third one, whoever's envelope is up going next.
I wouldn't even think, if we got an 11 by 17 in the mail, and the big ones were here at the meeting.
And that would work for me.
It's a stamp and sign them, yeah.
Because they're the ones that you would need to stamp and sign.
That's easier, because you've gotta take those big maps and try to fold them up.
We need to look at something here at the meeting that's a little bit more detailed than the 11s and 17s. I mean, a lot of engineer drawings, it's a lot coming 11 by 17 anymore.
Doesn't he have to have them for his files?
Why?
No, we don't.
We have them in our file. He has other things he's dealing with, but he has access to all our files.
So I wonder if on this thing, the notarized affidavit is a form saying that I am the owner of the property. Instead of, instead of giving a copy of the deed, a notarized affidavit would be somebody saying I am...
The issue with that is, that, because we did run into this a number of years ago, where two family members owned one piece of property, and then another time, we had, like, four or five people all owned the property together, and one person decided that they wanted to sell that property, and the other people didn't know about it. That's happened twice.
Okay.
Um, so, having a copy of the deed, that way we know that if you've got, say, four people inherited it when mom died, and Bobby wants to sell it, but Suzie doesn't, now you got a problem. If we give them the okay to subdivide that property out for him to sell, we could be Now you got a problem, if we give them the okay to subdivide that property out for him to sell, we could be in trouble. So, that would require something, some proof showing that, you know, those other members of the family wanna sell. I, I think it's full coverage of bond.
I think the only one, the reason they want that notarized is so that if you're not here, somebody else can be here.
Technically, what you're saying, that member comes in, and that's what you're saying, we gotta have it notarized.
Oh, yeah, you know what I'm saying, though, if you, like Sutherland or some of them come in instead of you, or their attorney.
That's the same.
Well, yeah, but, but we have a copy of the deed that says.
Yeah.
So if this property is going to sell and sell and sell and sell, and if there's more than, you know.
One name.
You know, if it's like a married couple, that's one thing, but when you're talking family property, and you've got four or five people in this property, and we've had that after several times. Where we've had several members of the family as part of the estate that the family left. You've got to, you've gotta know that everyone is aware of what's going on, so that you're not giving them permission to subdivide that property when they don't have the right to do it. We could get in trouble for doing that.
Yeah, I don't even think that is in the zoning ordinance itself, you know, the subdivision ordinance doesn't even talk about that, it's maybe more of a procedural thing that has developed over time and.
Yes.
It does make sense.
Yeah, because we didn't, originally, when I started doing this, we did not require a copy of the deed. It was when we ran into it the first time, and we found out that there were two people that owned the property, two brothers, and the other brother didn't know that this guy was planning to subdivide the property and sell.
You're on this line.
I mean, this is, you know, the tax map online, I don't know if you've ever gotten to find it, Vic?
No.
So it's pretty easy to find, and it's pretty easy to put the wetland layer on there to see that you got a wetland.
The blue is the white one.
Yeah. So, I mean, you ask for a tax map, you know, you know, this is the tax map, it's just overlaying on aerial imagery, which makes it way nicer to see, you know, somebody's property. You can say, oh, yeah, there's a house there, there's the neighbor.
That's why we can be on here and you work down that office, so you bring all that fancy stuff in.
So, there's film in that property, so they filled in wetlands, does he have to reclaim?
I have no idea, it may not be wetlands, I mean, they put, they project wetlands.
Looks like it's filled way out.
You gotta be careful with that, I'll tell you.
They just, and the D C projects wetlands, like we think there might be wetlands here.
Recors when they sold it.
Only if you have them come out and do a physical delineation, will you know for sure.
Stewart's made him come back, clean all the fill up.
I don't know whether or not a successor owner is responsible for any of that.
I would think that something should have been investigated at the time of the sale.
Before the property was transferred, yeah.
Yeah. It can be very dangerous.
And don't they, I guess my question is, don't they usually require that if you are filling in wetlands, that you have to create.
Well, you'd have.
Other wetlands to.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't let you just fill in wetlands like that anyway, you know, so unless, you know, people used to fill in wetlands all the time.
Yeah, yeah.
This has been filled in, it probably wasn't wetlands at the front, but halfway back, you know, it shows that it's on a map.
Just on the other side of that property, it's all swampy, right there, you can tell just by driving by.
And I, and somebody asked me about the, the auction property, you know, that big field there once, about, oh, I'd like to build a house back there, and I'm like, look at the map.
Yeah, Bertrand owned that.
See all that darkness right there, that is water, that's like standing, that's wet.
And he sold that to Chris, Bertrand, Gary Bertrand owned that, and he sold it to Chris, and he says, well, the only thing I can do with this is give all these neighbors around here, add them to their property a little bit, that's what he was thinking, I don't know if he's gonna do it or not. That's what he said he would do.
It's, it's all pretty wet, it's not wetland, it's just wet, it's just, you know? I mean, it could be drained, you know, you could ditch it and.
Alright.
But, I don't know, so.